Good evening, everyone. I want to call to order the regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the Village of Ortonville Council. It is August 28, 2017, and it is now 7:03. Let's rise for the pledge and the invocation, please. Tanya?
Pledge and mission.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Lord, tonight, in this place, we are safe and secure in our humble, upper midwestern town. We have dry homes, a dry roof over our heads, and food on our tables. Yet our friends, relatives, and so many strangers in Houston, Texas are facing extreme hardships. Hurricane Harvey continues to wreak havoc with resultant torrential rains. We ask that you protect those in peril from further harm as they struggle in so many ways. Lord, we thank you for those who are rushing to their aid, whether they be local, state, or national civilian or military personnel. Please protect them in all their combined efforts. We ask these things in your name. Amen. Liz, roll call vote. Roll call, please.
Bryce?
Here.
Westman?
Here.
Silas?
Present.
Eshman?
Here.
Scornica?
Here.
Sleva?
Here.
Wills?
Here. We have an agenda before us. I think I've heard that there are a couple modifications to the agenda that are being desired.
I'd like to add to Old Business, item 11B, Ironbell Trail Road.
Old Business B?
B. B.
We have a B.
We do?
No, we don't.
I do.
We have an Old Business number 11A.
I got...
And then we go to a B, and then we go to item 12A.
Okay. The agenda doesn't match this one and this one. That's why.
Well, the agenda is the one that we work from.
Right. This is both. What I'm saying is, we have this one, and then we have our comments, and they're not matching.
Hmm? Oh. Oh, there's a...
You know, we get two agendas. One has comments, and one does not. They're not the same.
This is one's public. This is the public one that's not matching?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
My notes don't have B.
Yeah.
But I see what you're talking about here.
I see that now.
Yeah, I see it, too.
It's in the comments.
Well, then, I'll put C down.
Well, let's make it C, then. Oh, wait a minute.
We need to have B.
Where's item B? Recreational passport grant.
It's under New Business.
It's under New Business B.
Well, that should be under Old Business.
A, B, and there should be C. Well, whatever way I want. You just gotta pick one and roll it. As long as they're both on there, we just gotta...
It should be old, because there's already a B, which is the smart, which is...
Yeah, but this is actually C.
No, that should be... No, this is old. The passport would be old, and then that would be the correct.
Sure. So, that's correct.
So, the passport is technically B, 11B, as it shows on the public agenda.
You've got a 12B on the note agenda.
And we have a 12B, so I think... Let's make the trails in 11C under Old. And this is going to be 11...
And these, the grant.
Yeah, Michigan Recreation Passport Grant is going to be 11B under Old Business, and then under Old Business, the Ironbell Trail is going to be C. Catch me if I screw it up.
All right, looks good. I think you got it.
Okay. I have support for those changes. Are there any other changes? You have support for that?
Support.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Eshman, supported by Councilman Dialis. Any other changes, corrections?
That was, I think... Did you motion?
Nobody made a motion. He wanted to add it, and that was it.
Okay.
I can make them... I'll make the motion to support the amended... I did... I thought you motioned, but I'm good. I make the motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Councilman Eshman, supported by Councilman Dialis.
To approve the agenda, yes.
To approve the agenda as amended.
Yes, as amended.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved as amended. Minutes from the July 24 meeting.
Under... Page two, the second motion, just to fix a typo, notion to motion.
The second one, from the top?
Mm-hmm. Motion, not motion.
Oh, okay.
Under the public comments, did we have the members' names of who spoke?
I do. But in the efforts of trying to keep everything minimizing minutes and everything, and what I've learned in the clerking 101, that's the way they suggested that I do the minutes.
Don't put the person's name?
Right.
For, you know, trying to be brief.
The minutes are rather long, seven pages.
I believe it's because of the spacing. It's causing, I think, that some of that... Okay. Okay, I guess... I mean, it's... I guess if... I don't know if it's a preference or if council wants to decide that, but whether we put a person's name or state, you know, one member versus, you know, Joe John Doe, it really make a difference on the length of the minutes, but just probably a preference of what the council wants to do. So, I guess it would be up to...
To me, the name would not be necessarily appropriate, but I would like to know if they're a resident of the village or not.
So, no, sometimes we have, sometimes we haven't.
Their address would be probably sufficient.
Consistent.
What do you think?
As a resident, I would not like to have my address out there for public website.
Okay, so, otherwise, anybody, John, Joe could come in from Goodrich or Grand Blanc and make a statement, and we won't know the difference?
But we would know at the podium, right? Because then, don't we tell them, ask them their name and where they live?
We do. We do.
Would you confirm that they're residents?
But the minutes later on won't reflect that.
We'll just say resident.
Yeah, that's... I agree with Keith.
Yeah, just say resident.
Village resident.
Knowing that there's been lashback to...
You know if that person was a resident?
I will have that information, yes.
Okay. I think that would be a...
Do you want to say resident or community?
Non-resident.
Resident or non-resident, or...
No, because I wasn't at this meeting.
Is that what you're looking for, Wayne?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know, yeah, sometimes we have, and so...
Yeah, but I wouldn't... I wouldn't say the name or address, yeah.
Page three, second paragraph. I was just given a reminder to the council about the conference and refer them to the website for information, because I wasn't sure of the deadline.
Did we find out what the deadline was? Or is it already come and gone?
The deadline, I want to say it was the 25th to 31st. I don't recall specifically what the deadline was, but I didn't know what the... I didn't know the deadline at the time. I just said...
It was in our packet.
It was August. It was in the packet, and I just...
I just...
I was just given a courtesy reminder to council.
Sure.
I'd like to just make one comment on the overall format that Liz has put together here. I think it looks really good. I agree. I thought the format looks... Didn't fit it all on there. I noticed it's a little finer font size.
I can change that. Yeah.
We have a typo on page two, second paragraph. Did you want on page three this to say a courtesy reminder?
Yeah, it was just a... Right. So, all that can be struck is just, I... Trustee Scornica gave a courtesy reminder to council about the upcoming conference in September.
Liz, did you get that?
I got that, yes.
Okay. And then, we'll make a... Under public comments, we'll make a change as to whether or not it's a resident or non-resident. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll need a motion. Do we have... We don't have a motion yet. A motion and support.
Let me just a quick question. On page seven, where we give the amended minutes on there?
Yes.
I know we brought this up before, and what's the reasoning that we're going to put those on the minutes of our amended?
Oh, you should always note what changes were made to the minutes.
So, are you going to state the original item and then put a line through it, and then state the revised?
I wasn't necessarily going to do that. I was just going to note that, you know, what was updated.
Because if I'm looking at the June 26 minutes as they are approved, I wouldn't know that it's contained in a following month or two months, minutes that this was amended. You know what I'm saying? I wouldn't know that. If I'm going out and looking at the June 26 or whatever minutes, and then, on these minutes of August, or August 20... No, whatever this one is, July 24th, I wouldn't necessarily know that these were amended minutes. These were the changes unless this is going on the June 26 minutes.
Yes. This is also noted on the 26 minutes.
Okay. And it's on these, on the August 28th? So, it's on two sets of minutes?
Yes. It'll be on the minutes that were changed, and it's on the minutes where we recorded.
Okay.
So, if we didn't make a copy of our changes right now, it will then be next month, so we can refer back to the changes that makes sense.
That's good.
Because we never receive a revised copy, so that is your record of the revised information. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Eshman, supported by Councilman Bryce, to approve the minutes of the July 24, 2017 council meeting as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any questions on the acceptance items? If none, we'll move on.
Should the B G Y A be listed as D as an acceptance item? It's in there, but not listed.
As a D.
That's my question.
Yep.
Because everything else is listed.
It is a separate item altogether.
So, are we amending the agenda now to do that?
Well, acceptance items are not discussed.
I know, but it's like it's... I know they're not...
That was not in there. I apologize. That was not in there as part of the acceptance. It was in there as part of the treasurer's report to note that that was something that came up on the audit last year and was corrected. I apologize. I didn't make a note of that.
Okay. So, it's two for one.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Number 14, sprinkler spelled wrong. That's it? That's all I got.
Yeah, that was one of my questions. I mean, obviously, I see that was damaged, but they just now realized that, or it was just got around to taking care of that?
I think they just got around to taking care of it. They noted it earlier in the year, and they had just had it repaired.
The homeowner did that?
I don't know whether we did it or if they did it. I believe this is for parts.
I believe, yeah, and that was something that was damaged, just part of snow plowing, yeah.
What was damaged on...
Sprinkler head, I believe.
On the head, yeah. With the plow.
Eighty-six... Eighty-seven dollars for sprinkler head?
Yeah, that's about right. I just paid $92 for one head to be replaced, so...
And you give me a call.
Same company. Same company.
Yeah, because... Yeah. I agree. It's like, that's a bit steep.
Any others?
The sign, number... I guess it's nine. Is that a new sign, or we replaced it, or what was that? Was it damaged?
That was before I got back. I don't know.
That's probably... Is that the green sign that's at the end of Church Street?
I think so.
On the east side?
Yeah.
Across from Pete Burkett's house? Yeah.
Yeah, Bob had indicated that that... They had tried to repair it for some time, and it was the wood, I guess.
The wood had delaminated. It was in dispatch shape.
Completely rotted through, and...
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have an update on the DTE, the lights, replacing, going to LED lights? Or is that going to be your village?
No, that's... No, that's one of the things that's in the stack of...
Stuff you're putting off.
We had... Yeah, we had a lot of projects like that that were in the process, that I haven't picked up and moved forward with yet.
Sure. No problem.
There hasn't been anything on that in a while, in a little bit.
Sure.
Number 17, for the Mill Street project, what exactly was that that we did on Mill Street, on that Mill Street project with Bedrock Express? Where's my spelling?
Asphalt patching.
That's what it was?
I'm guessing, based off of the amount of patches that were in front of my house.
Oh, I mean, I was just... I don't know what that was. Bedrock Express.
I know they were working up there again. That was in July, and I'm not...
The drain?
They were constantly doing work on Mill Street. I know that, but...
Well, we have a budgeted line item specifically for the Mill Hill drain. I believe that's what that is.
Right, but I guess I'm just... What did we get at Bedrock Express that was the Mill Street project? What was it? What was done?
I...
It would more than likely be rocks, maybe 22-way gravel.
Considering what they sell, I'm just wondering, like, what?
Oh, was that the drainage? Was that drainage off of Mill 2? Didn't they do some drainage work there, too? And that...
Yeah, they've been working on that drain.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's probably what it was. That's probably what it was for.
Yeah, I don't know if they charged it to that, though, in the back. That would be just drains in general. But to apply that to the Mill Street project, I don't think they would do that. This had to be something, I believe, in the road or close proximity to the road.
Okay.
We'll check on that and get back.
Just give us a quick email response or something.
I make a motion that we pay our bills in the amount of $12,666.24 from July 20, 2017 to August 15, 2017.
Support. Motion by Councilman Scornica, supported by Councilman Eshman, pay our bills in the amount of $12,666.24. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Liz?
Watsu?
Yes.
Silas?
Yes.
Eshman?
Yes.
Scornica? Yes.
Sleva?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item eight, items from trustees.
Sure, we'll start with me. I was absent from the planning commission last month.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
With notice. I didn't make a meeting, so I've got nothing to report.
I'll talk about it a little bit.
Okay.
I was there.
Okay. Thanks.
The fire authority board did meet last Thursday, and we went over the budget. I think you've got it in your packets here, maybe?
Right.
I was hoping the chief would be here, because it was pretty... It was pretty forthright, as far as the budget goes, but there's also in our packet some information about the roof replacement on Fire Station 1. I'm not sure if we are to move forward on this at all, or if this is just for our consideration, being that we're going to have a joint meeting.
Yeah, we will actually move forward on that at the joint meeting.
Okay.
It'll be either approved or not approved at that time.
All right.
Which, as a reminder for the public, it's Wednesday evening at, I believe, 7 o'clock.
6:30.
6:30.
6:30.
And is that... Is it going to be at the library? Or where?
Fire's library or Fire Station 1? It's at the library.
It's at the library, yeah.
Will you check, Liz, and me?
Okay.
This Wednesday? This Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
The 30th?
The 30th.
I missed that one.
I don't know.
I'll miss that one, too.
Joint meeting?
Yeah, 6:30 at the library.
We have to have a quorum there, because we will be conducting business, so is there anyone else?
I can make it. I just... I will not be present.
You will not be present at all? Okay, you'll be there. Okay.
I'll be there.
Anyone else? Okay.
As of now, yeah.
Mark?
Yeah.
Do we know if there's been anything said about the repainting of Station 1 on the backside of it?
Unless John has a memory of it. We talked a lot about it, about not so much the painting, but more the budget at the meeting, and I didn't ask.
Okay.
Unless John has a memory of it.
No.
Okay. Because every time I come out of the post office, alls I see is a crappy-looking building, quite frankly.
I think with the proposed roof going on, I'm not sure if they're going to do that in concert.
Okay.
I don't think they would paint it before they did work on the roof first, but I'm positive of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Guess I'll go. I have a question. Last month, we had a resident concerned about Ball Street lighting, and I was just wondering if anything's been done with that, to research that at all. I didn't see that on the agenda. And then, an update on the candidates. We are still taking applications for the village manager position. The expiration of that posting goes down Thursday, August 31st, and we will continue interviewing those last applications.
That's at 5:00 PM. Close of business?
Close of business.
I have an item, but it's not a subcommittee item.
It doesn't need to be. It's just trustees.
That's fine.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. I conducted an investigation into the free-ranging chicken complaint that was filed July 31st by a resident of this village, and between August 18 and August 19, I observed and was able to document in writing and take pictures of the following, and that is that there are eight free-ranging chickens in the James Street area. There is a visible six-foot-long wooden chicken coop, and the chickens free-range at 77 James Street, 172 Myron Street, 193 Myron Street, and also 110 James Street, so...
You had chickens at all those locations?
Well, it was... These chickens would move about. They were at all those...
They were ranging.
So, that's all.
That will be addressed in more detail later in the agenda.
Okay.
Couple things for me. While you were talking about the lights, keeping those on the radar...
Ball Street question.
Oh, the Ball Street. Oh, did we ever discuss that?
No, we didn't. We didn't. There was a... Was it last meeting, right? A lady was commenting about the lack of lighting on Ball Street.
That's what I was just, yeah, saying about... I didn't see it on the agenda.
At the last meeting?
What we've done about it. What kind of research have we done?
I don't even remember that. I don't remember Ball Street lighting at all.
I think there...
The lack of...
There's only one street light... There's only one street light in the whole stretch of the road.
Mm-hmm.
From the senior center down.
So, it's one there at the corner, if I remember correctly, right?
Yeah.
And then, there's anything else all the way until Mill Street?
Well, it doesn't go to Mill Street. Ball Street goes parallel.
Yeah, okay. Till Church Street?
Right.
Yes.
Did we note, was the resident, they live on Ball Street?
Mm-hmm.
They did live on Ball Street. Okay. So, saying, be careful what you ask for.
Well, he said he's worried about the children riding their bikes, because there's no light, and when we were talking about sidewalks, that's what brought it up for him.
There's no sidewalks, no light.
Right.
I think there was some...
He was doing the sidewalk, huh?
Even...
Okay, I will check.
So, mine was, as you were talking about the budgeting with the lights, we still have not addressed getting trash estimates. I know that's been like a two-year wish.
I'm sorry?
Getting trash estimates. It's quite steep for what we pay, I think, and I've been asking for that.
And that was on the last agenda as well?
No, no, I mean for the village, not for the Friday trash thing. I'm talking about for the village, getting another estimate on garbage. We talked about maybe the cell phones and the garbage. That was a long time ago. But I would like to have that on something we can maybe reduce the cost at that would be...
And again, you're talking about the village...
The village trash, not the residence trash.
So, the DPW dumpster and the dumpster behind the...
Just to get another estimate on that, possibly. It's been a while. We've had to see.
And the old... And the old, was it the, uh?
Mill.
The old mill?
All together.
Okay, yeah.
All of them that we have.
And then my other personal thing is, um, continuing to share addresses of our residents, I'm concerned about safety and privacy. There are many issues of safety, and I do not like reading out addresses and residents, it's not fair to be doing this publicly. Um, I have a very big problem with that.
Okay, I think we've just discussed that.
But I, I mean, no offense, but as Karen just read, a bunch of addresses with people.
I didn't read names.
But it's not, we, I don't think we should be doing that. There are safety issues that have multiple times come up with residents.
So you're saying when residents come up to speak, you don't want them to say the address at the podium either?
I've always said they don't should do. If you read Robert's rules, they do not have to. I, I mean, you say if you'd like to give that, your name or your address, but you don't have to. But I'm just saying, in general, anything that we're doing, there's been multiple incidents, um, people's property, animals being vandalized, it's because of this information being out there, and I don't agree with it at all.
Well, we have to, at some point, we have to be specific, not to a point where we're, you know, putting addresses out, but if.
Well, I can see like maybe a James Street, I don't know, maybe that's, but I just don't like, I would not want my address out there and what's going on at my house on a public website.
Okay.
That's good.
The only thing I had to add to the Personnel Committee is we are meeting on, I believe, we have a date, uh, September fifth?
Oh, yes.
At, uh, six, seven.
Seven.
For all of us?
For, to review, uh, for the review resumes.
For personnel, okay.
For personnel.
Yeah. And then what, wait, it's September eleventh, or twelve, what meeting is that? What other meeting hours?
September eleventh?
There is a meeting September eleventh.
Is it eleven?
It's the rules and regulations, but they want it out there.
Yeah, there we go, that's what it is.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah. Thank you for reminding that. Okay, um, I have some brief little tidbits here that I will, more, more reminders. The DDA has a, uh, body of, of coordinating, and what they're trying to do at this point, and I think this is something that's important, as we move forward, uh, with our multiple activities within the community, uh, we need to have, uh, an understanding of what, what every other organization in the community is doing, whether that's the Boy Scouts, the church groups, um, uh, other, the township, the school. We're trying to put together a concise calendar so that we can work together, and the DDA is calling this group powered locally, and they do have, uh, is that regular meetings, or, or is that, do you know, Tanya? Or not, or Bern, Bern dime?
There was one in the beginning of August, and I don't know if there's another one scheduled.
Okay.
And we're talking quarterly first, and then they will turn around.
So what we're trying to do, we're, the DDA is trying to coordinate and help, not necessarily to run the special events, but to coordinate so that the left hand knows what the right hand's trying to do. If it's a festival of any kind, or if it's an activity of any kind, uh, we'd like to be able to help and put together the different organizations with each other so that they can have a common goal, and feed off of each other and help each other. So this is something that I, I think is a very important thing, that especially this past year, when the Chamber of Commerce folded, and, uh, the, the fireworks, uh, were canceled, and then they, we had to start them back up, and, you know, it was very confusing. Um, and we had some activities that were held out at the Township Park rather than in the downtown, in the, in the village, so it created some real animosity and some problems between different organizations, and so, uh, the DDA is trying to, trying to, uh, alleviate that and keep it from happening again. There is a, the DDA is also inviting any of us and our, uh, Planning Commission members, if you want to go to a placemaking session in Howell, Michigan on, uh, September eighteenth and nineteenth. The, this is totally funded for free, there's no charge for the event, there's no charge for the hotel rooms, and there's food. And it's no charge, it's been all funded by grants. So if you're able to do so.
What is it for again?
It's what they call placemaking sessions, it's, in other words, uh, why should we, uh, or anybody visiting our community come to our town? In other words, we're making the place, we're making a goal for somebody to come to, why should they come to our community? It's called placemaking. It's, uh, sponsored by Main Street Organization, which is what the DDA is about, so it's, uh, it's trying to make our community, uh, better in a lot of ways, and there are some people that wanna, wanna see it succeed and wanna see it funded, and so there's no expense to us as board members. So we're, if you wanna, uh, talk to me afterwards, we can, uh, get you plugged in. On, uh, a couple weeks back, about three weeks ago, our Planning Commission took a tour of the Fletcher School Building, and, uh, there were, uh, three Planning Commission members who were, who attended. Uh, a couple of them had never seen the inside of that building, to know what it is like, and you don't know unless you're in the building with the, it's ninety thousand square feet. And, uh, there were some ideas floating around, and, uh, one of the ideas and one of the things that the, that we're trying to, uh, be encouraged by is take a big funnel, and any idea for this building, regardless of who's putting the idea forward, goes into the funnel, and it may come out something totally different, but we're not leaving any stone unturned. When I say we, it's the community. Uh, there's no expense to this, but, uh, we're just trying to take a, uh, piece of property that could be utilized, uh, in a number of ways. One of the things that came up was perhaps, uh, by Rick McVinci, McAvinci, who indicated, well, why don't, this would be a perfect community center, where you could have the fire department, the parks and wrecks, cause there's a gym there, uh, and, uh, the village or the township have all their offices in one building. Well, you know, just that, that particular type of brainstorming, so that took place.
Was anybody from, uh, Brandon Schools present for that tour?
Yes.
And who was that?
That was the head of, uh, operations, Mark, Mark, or head of maintenance, Mark, uh, Mark, Mark, anyway, Mark, I can't remember his last name, but, uh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, also, as a reminder to the community, there are low-interest loans available through Oakland County for home maintenance that are income-sensitive. In other words, you have to have, uh, an income restriction over which you don't qualify, but under which you would qualify for a low-interest loan which would require no payments at all, either interest or principal, until such a time in the future, it could be twenty, thirty years, at which time you would sell your home. Then that would come out of the proceeds of the sale. Uh, the reason why I'm bringing it up tonight is that yesterday, there was a retired, uh, police officer who lives in the village, who told me, Wayne, he says, I just got a, I just had to put a gold-plated well in, just like you did. I said, oh, really? He says, yeah. I said, how much was your well? He said, ten thousand dollars. I said, well, you know that this loan is, is available. So, you know, he was interested in that, so I think there are a lot of people that aren't aware of it, so we just need to keep that in front of the public.
It's on our website?
I believe it is, it will be on there, yeah.
It will be on the.
So things like new roofs, new septics, new windows, new wells, electrical service, designed primarily for retirees, people with low income. I think the cap, uh, for a two-person, uh, two people in a family is like forty-three thousand, and that, you know, that includes social security and pension income. Okay? So that's all I have. And now we have public comment on agenda items.
Karen Anderson, and I am a village resident, and, um, the one thing I'd like to say to, um, regarding what Councilman Bryce had said, um, we have had, uh, two instances of somebody trespassing in our yard, and, um, in one instance, they threw a, uh, headless chicken on our deck, and in the other instance, they opened our chicken coop door. Uh, we had already rehomed our chickens, but if we hadn't, something would've gone in and more than likely killed them. Um, and my name and address has appeared in the paper, and I do believe that's why. Um, I, I don't know where else this would come from, but it's pretty disturbing that, in the middle of the night, both of these things happened. To wake up and have a headless chicken on your deck is kind of upsetting.
What do you mean by rehoming your chicken?
We have found another home for our chickens.
Oh, okay.
Um, it's just, we just want to be done with all of this, but I'd like to read a, a letter that I have written, um, my husband and I have written, kind of as a rebuttal to all of this, and I do have a copy for everybody.
Please do.
Um, this letter is to address the Village Council regarding the baseless claim that the Anderson family have dogs that are not controlled. This is a blatant falsehood and mean-spirited. On August fifth, twenty fifteen, the Oakland County Sheriff came to our home with a complaint of our two dogs running across the street to the open Fortis Corridor property. My husband respectfully and honestly indicated to the sheriff that our dogs do on occasion, and our company crossed the street. At this time, we were issued a misdemeanor ticket of two-hundred and forty dollars. In hindsight, we should've had contested this ticket since my husband accompanied both dogs across the street, and we had a visitor at our house that day that could confirm the statement. As previous, as previously indicated to the Village Council, our dogs are never outdoors unaccompanied, and we have complete control of our dogs at all times. Consequently, we feel a certain degree of harassment from the Dietrich and Gabriel households, who have made false accusations to both the sheriff's office and to all of you, the Village Council. We are currently exploring the installation of an underground fence system, a very costly expense for over an acre property, which unfortunately will not appease the bullying tactics of the aforementioned families. To address the other ongoing problem with chickens free-ranging on Candace Court, sadly, our chickens are no longer at our residence. We were forced to remove our two pet roosters based on a letter dated July twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, from the interim village manager, stating our chickens must be removed by Friday, August eleventh, or further action will be taken. While we are not the only residents in the village with roosters, we are the only individuals to receive a disturbing the peace letter, and the reason for this is we are the only family in the entire village that a complaint was filed against. Conversely, both the Gabriels and Dietrichs' excessive speeding on Candace Court endangers the free-ranging children. We have observed on many occasions their vehicles driving unsafely at excessive speed, I personally have almost been hit while mowing my lawn. We respectfully request the Village Council and Oakland County Sheriff focus on this potentially more consequential public safety concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a speed limit?
There's no speed limit sign, and I, I, I mean, can I give you these?
Did you mean to say, uh, ran, ran over children or chickens?
No, I said the free-ranging children, it's kind of a little pun on my free-ranging chickens. Um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I confronted the person and said, you almost hit me, and she said, I know, you scared me, because she came so fast around the corner. So it's, um, they're, they're driving way too fast for children on the street, and for anybody, I mean, if you're a, whatever, mowing your grass, they're driving way too fast.
Cause if the sign's not posted, it's understood that it's still twenty-five, but.
And you know what, and it, it twenty-five is even a little fast on a, on Candace Court, cause there's only six houses.
But I'm just saying, you know, like, under the, the laws, like if it's not for resident houses.
Yeah, I looked that up on the, the Michigan Legislature law, and, you know, it's based on the width of the road and, and everything else, what the appropriate speed limit is. So, um, I, I mean, it shouldn't have to be posted, but it appears it does have to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Item ten on our agenda, Village Manager's Report.
I apologize for not having the, uh, the, the written, um, report for, for these items. Um, I will make sure that, in the next meeting, that we have that. Um, pretty much, I'll go, go through the ones that we have some movement on, the scrap tire grant, uh, for Cedar Street, and Schoolhouse is currently out for bids, the bids are due on September twenty-first, and will be reviewed, um, and then Council will get that, uh, proposal on the meeting on the twenty-fifth of September.
What were those dates again, please?
The bid opening is nine-twenty-one.
Okay.
And then it'll be before Council, nine-twenty-five.
And how do you select who those go out to?
They go on a, a, a central, um, contractor's, um, website that people go to that are looking for the jobs, and that, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
And you get, they have to qualify to even get the bids, you know, and go there, so it's, step one is, you're already dealing with qualified people. Um, the other one is the, the Oakwood Sidewalk, um, this had been, uh, dead in its tracks, um, due to a misunderstanding between the village and, and the, uh, Oakland County Road Commission, um, in regards to whether it was earmarked as a shoulder extension or a sidewalk. Under the sidewalk rules, it has to be twelve feet off of the edge of the road. Um, we have received a waiver from Oakland, from Oakland County Road Commission for that, um, and we are, uh, going to proceed with the application and get the approvals from them, um, for, for our project. And it has to extend the sidewalk from Beakees to Cedar Street.
So as long as it's called a shoulder extension, they're willing to work with us.
Well, they've done away with that now, this is gonna be a sidewalk.
So if it's not twelve feet, what would it be now, do you know? Like how close?
Roughly eight is where we can, and that, that'll reduce the amount of trees that we have to take out, and that, that's always a concern, you know, that's, it's always a hurdling thing going on when you just wanna take down, and, and a couple of them are nice, you know, nice trees, I know, I understand that. But, uh, they've, they've waived that requirement for us to allow us to put the sidewalk in, cause there's virtually no room, um, to fit it in, so, um, they're, they're, uh, willing to work with us on that.
What does that translate to in the way of funding?
The estimates.
That is, that is the, uh, that's in the tri-county funds, so we will pay one-third of it.
We will pay one-third?
I, I believe it's sixty thou, I haven't looked at it in a while, I believe it's sixty thousand, so our portion will be twenty-plus engineering.
The sidewalk from, from Beakees all the way to Cedar Street?
Yeah.
Was only sixty thousand to get across the creek and everything?
Yeah. There's no, oh, the river, they're gonna use, more than likely, it's going on that bridge, that's gonna be the only bottleneck in it. As far as people crossing the, the creek, will be that bridge, they'll be right next to the road.
So we'll have to put up a, a guardrail or something there?
There is a guardrail on the, on the bridge itself, it will be extended.
Between, I'm talking between the sidewalk and the street.
No, no, that'd be too close to the road for the cars. Guardrails will stop a car anyway.
I, I guess I'm misunderstanding, so is there, there's a guardrail, but then there's, there's a bridge beyond the guardrail?
There's a guardrail on the outside of the bridge, and there's about a, um, five-foot piece between the, the road itself and the guardrail.
Yeah.
That's where they'll walk. That's where they walk now.
Yeah, I would think that if we were to do that, we would put flashing yellow and speed limit signs in that area if we were to go there.
They'll have to approve, Oakland County will watch that real close, I'm sure.
Yeah, I bet they will, yeah.
Would they perhaps re-stripe that so that there's less of a shoulder on the north side of the road? So we can have a broader, wider shoulder on the south side of Oakland?
The shoulder's not in play, cause the sidewalk's gonna be away from it. Jumping across the bridge?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think they'll mess with that bridge.
Not the bridge proper, but.
Cause that'll squeeze the other side.
Well, yeah, it'll squeeze it over there, but there won't be any pedestrians over there on the north side.
Assuming that everybody uses the sidewalk and that, yeah, but we can, we can ask them, when they go into design, they're gonna do the best they can to get as much room as, as we can possibly get over there.
Okay.
Now, the whole stretch is, is dangerous and, and, and treacherous, really, if, if you, uh, when this first started three or four years ago, maybe more, um, I had pictures of, of a couple of people that were like, right, they've dug a trail alongside the road, and people walk in that trench, and it is literally inches from truck mirrors and things like that, so, um, we need to get them. So we need to get them, get them over to the side before somebody gets hurt. Then we also, with the joint meeting of the Planning Commission, DDA, and council, we discussed a review and a revision of the master plan. Along with that, the, together with capital improvement program, we've asked the two entities that are involved with the village now to give us quotes on those items. One being the planner that wrote the master plan, and for them to revisit that. And it doesn't have to be completely redone, because some things aren't going to change. Our historical buildings are all going to be the same. The road conditions, other than a few streets, are not going to get any better. And so it's limited, and we got, we got quotes from both.
Do we give them a scope of work to quote to? Pardon? Do we give them a scope of work to quote to? Or just a general revise?
A general revise, but there's definite items that we need. The correlation between the master plan has strong indication of sewers. And the new one will, more than likely, because that doesn't go away, indicate what that is and what happened. I don't know so much the results of the election, but it'll stipulate that in the absence of a sewer treatment system, that this, these are the steps that we need to look at and look into. In a master plan sort of way, it doesn't just nail it down.
Sure, yeah.
But it'll be, you know, we have to be very careful. And so that, and both, both of the price, the quotes that we got, and then Row Engineering, both did the, they have planners, and they give us a master plan vote, or vote, a master plan quote as well as the CIP. My feeling is I would really like for the planner to do the master plan and the engineer to do the CIP. And basically, we would have a series of meetings and indicate how much money we're going to put every year. If you have an active CIP program, you need to go buy it and put money into it every year. And there is ways that you can, you know, you can fund out in the future a little bit. You make a fund for a certain project. And then you don't get into the, we're squirrel-holing money or that. And so there's options there. But both of them have given, and both of them were really close on both items. So we'll, we'll take a look at that. And the Planning Commission is on September 5th. Then more than likely, at the end of September, we'll come with, to you with the recommendation from the Planning Commission as far as when are we going to proceed. Both companies indicated that the reviews and everything would probably take about six months for the master plan. The CIP can be done relatively quickly, but that needs to be done in accordance to the master plan. Very important statement that you say your CIP is based on what the master plan wants. So that's going to the Planning Commission.
Going back to, sorry, going back to your Oakland sidewalk, so what are you moving forward with exactly? You're moving forward with the quote?
With Oakland, with what we have, the drawings and that, and Oakland County, the Road Commission has reviewed those and all of that. So we're moving forward into getting the engineer, engineer quote, which I have, but I don't like it, so I sent it back to them. And they just went into some things I don't think they need, we need to pay for. So pretty much what we're going to do is narrow it down as far as what we want the engineer to do and have them re-quote for the engineering to get, to get everything going. Looks like a spring project now.
Sure. And you're saying the estimate that we have from Row was around $60,000 for that sidewalk?
I believe so. I have so many going on, and I didn't bring it with me tonight, because I was only going to talk about it. I did have it on the agenda, and I pulled it.
And the tri-party funds that we have available for that are how much?
I don't know the exact number. I would think it's around 20,000. We just got more than what we've ever got before, and I don't know what they did to the formula or that, but they give us more than what we have been getting. One year, we only had $390 from them. So they're, and tag along with the next item is the Pilot Local Road Improvement Matching Fund. And with that, they're trying to give more money to the communities through their system, which they should do. But they, that program is, they've given us a grant of $5,981. That's for the total project, so it's a 50-50 split. So our split is 2990 is what we'll pay. And we are moving forward, we also, I requested that, equipment-wise, we're kind of, kind of lean on that type of equipment. So they have authorized us that if we so wish, we can take some of that money and buy the equipment that we need with it for crack sealing. We have the capability now, but if we have the money to do projects like this, we'll need a little bit, a little bit better machine in that for it. So anyways, it is just under $6,000, and in our part, it's just under three. And we have purchased the crack seal. I don't know if it's on site yet or not, but we did, we did buy it, so.
So your intention is buy a new crack sealing machine, then?
Yes. And we have permission to do it if we want to.
Sure, sure.
Not necessarily intent. If we can get a bigger machine that'll do, ideally, you can buy them with two ones. So one guy's not out in the street running these scribbles all, you know, all over the place, and two guys doing scribbles, so, which is a whole lot faster. And we'll look at the cost and all that, but it appears we can do that and still do a major amount of work even with purchasing this machine. And that is all that I have written down, unless you have questions for me on other particular ones. I apologize for the Ball Street light thing. I do not remember that at all. So we got it written down, and I'll research it.
Could you give us a status on, well, we're not giving addresses.
South Street, is it?
Yes.
On what?
The court, the court.
The South Street court issue?
It is in litigation at this time. They have, they've requested some, they had questions and wanted our response, and we have responded, and we have not heard back from them yet.
Is there a deadline?
It is, it has been bumped from district to circuit. And that's a whole different, different ballgame, and so we're just waiting their response now.
Okay.
Would you mind touching for us, I know that's a DDA thing, but the wonderful banners that our guys have been putting up lately? Would you mind?
I don't know a whole lot about that. That's the DDA, but our guys, maybe Liz can, if you don't mind. Do you know anything about?
I'm not.
Well, I was going to say, our DDA rep, you might know something about him, Wayne.
Well, the project's been in the works for about three months roughly, and we've been taking donations for, and some of them will have individuals' names on them, as I recall. Or your business name or your logo. And they're going out throughout the business district.
They look nice.
And they will be supported at the bottom of the banner. When I was traveling out west, there were other communities that had those, and they were very, very nice. And I think, and they just put them up today. I don't know if those of you have noticed them or not, but they just went up partially today.
Just when I was just asking about those the other day, about like, why don't we have banners downtown?
Well, the DDA got a really good deal, I believe like a couple of years ago on those brackets. I think they got them from like Rochester or somebody like that. And then we attempted to put up a couple, and they were too big for us, and they went out into the street. And a couple, I know at least one got wet pretty good. And so we had to take it back and fabricate some fabrication on it, and that's completed now. And these signs here, they're really, they're more compact, and they're not, I don't like really big signs hanging there. I think that it gets gaudy looking and that. These are really nice-looking signs. I commend the DDA on it. They look good. So we get the bottom part on to tie them down a little bit, and it'll be good.
So it is a work in process, and so I believe, are they going all the way down to the ANW? Do you know? Off the top of your head?
No, because they're in the west of town. Down on South Street, you can go to church.
Okay. Okay, moving forward on our agenda, we have under Old Business, 11A Animal Control, chickens slash dogs.
Yes, this is on here for, I would think to call it manager clarification. And Wayne, do you mind if I stand up here in this corner?
Go ahead.
And pretty much, there's a lot of different conversations and things going on. And there's, there's not accusations, but there is, there's the feeling that maybe, you know, the village didn't do what they should have done for a long time in regards to dealing with the chickens. We have an ordinance in place and has been for a long, long time that states no chickens. So what happened before I got here the first time was the state had a thing called Right to Farm Act, and the communities, a lot of them didn't act, they didn't change their ordinances in accordance to that farm. And we were one of them. We just let it go and said, "Okay, this is what we're going to do. We're not going to have roosters because of the noise ordinance. We're not going to supposedly free-range." And, but I don't remember too much of a free-ranging problem, what we had. We had it, but there was no complaints and nothing going on. And so when they repealed that Right to Farm Act, and they didn't really do away with it, they just said they give the communities the opportunity to pass ordinances against it. When the original one came out, it was specific in there, the communities can't do anything about this. This is a state law. Learn to love it. This is the way that. Now, all they did was change it a little bit, and now the communities can enforce their ordinances and that. We never changed ours in the first place, but our ordinance has some fundamental issues in it. First of all, is it's not all condensed down into one animal-type ordinance. We use the nuisance ordinance, we use, which is noise. We use the leash thing, which is strictly dogs in our ordinance. The word dog is in there. You send somebody a letter and say you're on, you know, you're letting your chickens run around, or you're letting your whatever roam around. There's no enforcement opportunities except for dogs. So that part does have to change. But anyway, what happens is people feel that, me at the time, that I'm not doing what I'm supposed to do because I have this ordinance for no chickens. But yet I got this controversy, and there's no doubt about that. The ordinance does say no chickens. Okay. I had this controversy in the community. Okay, one of the jobs of the manager is to make sure that the council doesn't get tied up in that kind of a controversy. But with me doing this, I need a decision from you whether or not we're going to enforce what we have right now. And I believe that David did this before, where he tried to say, "Okay, we're not going to enforce it right now. We're going to redo the ordinance." But that hasn't happened yet. So before, we did away with the roosters by the noise, by the noise and nuisance. Okay, we didn't have a free-range town, so we didn't address it. Oakland County Animal Control has said they are not going to come out here and chase our chickens around. So that part of it is going to be unenforceable unless we chase them around. And it's, you know, I've been out there, and I've watched them for a little bit, and they've roamed around on different people's property and all of that. And, you know, I've never seen them go home. And I've only seen a couple little sheds that resemble chicken coops. It's more than likely what they are. I want, I want something from council. I did two motions. One, if council decides that we're going to stay with what we have, we still have to do a rewrite. We have to change that dog to pets or animals and that. And we have to, it has to go to the Planning Commission, because if we're going to allow them, then we need to have a setback for the chicken coops off the property line. That's what most, every community has that. And we have, they'll do the research on that, and it's just a setback. The main, the main question being of council. And this is the controversial subject. But tomorrow, am I writing letters of non-compliance to the people? Now, the Andersons, I wrote that letter, because that was basically, I was reacting to a rooster noise. And sent that letter. And they were very cooperative and very kind, judging by, and just by the way everything was going for them. And they eliminated the rooster nearly right away. And I should say eliminated. They rehomed him. And then, and now I hear that, you know, they're all gone. And that's basically what you want the letters to do. You want the letter to say, "Oh, yeah, I got to do this." So tomorrow, am I writing letters? Are we going to redo this ordinance and just calm everything down and go slow? Or do we want to start the process and eliminate chickens? So it's, to me, the two things there are the two things. The two suggested motions, one is to operate under the assumption that we're not going to allow chickens at all. And then just, we'll fix the other parts of the ordinance. Or to, you know, step back, rewrite it, and then put it into effect. And I hate putting you into this situation, but the problem is we are going against the written ordinance right now. And we need the manager, I don't want to spend money with the attorney and the time of the Planning Commission and do all this, and then have the council change its mind, you know, after we do that, which you can. It's just not, it's not good. We need to, my request is that we decide what we're going to do tonight.
So we would need a roll call vote if we want to allow chickens at all?
No, it doesn't have to be roll call.
Just do the motions.
Just have a vote.
Just two motions.
Whatever.
Well.
Got two motions there. Can't vote them both on.
No.
Are we going to discuss the matter at all?
Well, you put a, you put a motion on the table. You put a motion on the table, you get support, and then you discuss it, technically.
I'll make a motion to instruct the village manager to prepare ordinance revisions for village ordinance 90.35-90.62 in order to allow the keeping of chickens within the village with restrictions as approved by council.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Dialas, supported by Councilman Bryce, that we make, prepare ordinance revisions allowing the keeping of chickens within the village with restrictions as approved by council to yet to be determined, basically. That's, okay. So now, we have discussion on that particular motion.
Who wants to begin the discussion?
Whoever, jump right in.
Okay, well, I have something prepared here.
Go for it.
Okay.
As long as it pertains to this particular motion.
Well, clearly, I do not think it's a good idea to, you know, I really don't think it's a good idea to revise the village ordinance. Okay, I think the no-chicken ordinance should stay exactly as it is. And then I've done some research to back up why I think that. And in most jurisdictions, chickens are considered, they're either considered livestock And in most jurisdictions, chickens are considered, they're either considered livestock, or they're considered poultry. They're not considered household pets. Chickens can't be trained to use a litter box, pee pad, or paper trained. They defecate wherever they are at the moment. Now, dogs and cats can live inside the home with the owner, but chickens are outside animals that require coop and special fencing. And chickens, and the chicken excrement, and the chicken feed, which ends up on the ground, attract vermin. And the vermin and predators that chickens attract are mice, rats, possums, raccoons, and possibly in this area, might even be a coyote. And a coyote, basically, is not gonna really care to distinguish between a chicken or a family pet, for that matter. As far as blight goes, chicken coops and fencing are not desirable additions to small lots in Ortonville. Chicken coops and fencing will create more blight in the village, where we are trying to eliminate blight, and we wanna, you know, discourage blight. Now, as far as the Brandon Township ordinance goes, the chicken ordinance in Brandon Township has a limit of six chickens on two and a half acres of land, and I think this is a really good rule of thumb for what is the proper environment for people to have chickens. And this two and a half, two and one half acre ordinance also protects neighbors who do not have chickens nor want chickens. Now, the trustee packet on four twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, contained actually five ordinances that would need to be changed if we were gonna revise the chicken ordinance. And those were nuisance, the ordinance for nuisances, the ordinance and animal regulations, the ordinance for it's unlawful to keep animals, three, the ordinance for disturbing the peace, and the ordinance for sanitary conditions with keeping pets, and five, the ordinance which would require a health officer to correct conditions or condemn. Now, I've studied the five ordinances, and that would have to be a change to accommodate allowing chickens into the village. And one of these ordinance is the health officer to correct conditions or condemn. And that's a nineteen fifty-seven ordinance, and that requires the hiring of a village of Ortonville health officer to monitor, regulate, and enforce the ordinances that would be allowing the chickens into the village, and to make sure that all the health conditions are being met by the chicken owner. And I would just like to say that there's really no money in the Ortonville budget to hire a health officer. Our budget is very tight. By the time we pay employees' wages and expenses in this year's budget, we're still gonna have to take sixty-seven thousand dollars out of our reserve funds to do two road projects this year. And we do have a ten-year plan to restore our deteriorated roads, and this is why we just really don't have the money for a health officer. So in conclusion, for these reasons, I do not advocate changing the no chicken ordinance of nineteen eighty-two. And thank you.
So do you think that the sanitary conditions with keeping pets are part of the ordinance should just be stricken altogether?
No, but you're gonna have to have a health officer to see if these chickens are being maintained properly.
But even if we don't add chickens to it.
The township doesn't have a health officer.
We still have sanitary conditions.
Well, I, look, hey, I'm just going by the ordinances that I was given in my four twenty-four packet, and it was, there were five ordinances, and one of them was ordinance, and that's a health officer to correct conditions or condemn. And I'm just saying, we can't afford to hire a health officer. So how are, you know, if we've got all these chickens here, you know, who else but a health officer would be able to monitor and regulate this situation, to make sure that these chickens are in a sanitary environment? And that's where I'm coming from with this.
Well, it says, it has a definition of a health officer, includes the officers of health as appointed by the council of the village of Ortonville. So you could be a health officer.
Who would enforce this?
Well, someone is going to have to pay the health officer. Nobody's gonna be a health officer for free.
But this is my argument, we're singling out chickens. Nobody makes sure you have a correct doghouse, or rabbit hutch, or parakeet. Nobody does these things. Chickens are no different than any other pet you may or may not already have if we decide to do it. You cannot single out chickens and say chickens will have a certain fee, and a certain this, and a certain that, unless all of our animals will do that. Either all of them will, or all of them won't. There isn't, chickens are separate from everything else. I mean, nobody cares what your parakeet or rabbit are in unless there is a health concern that you can see that you might wanna report. Nobody chucks my rabbit cage. We do not have a health officer.
Same thing with the noise ordinance.
I'm just saying that that-
We're not allowing any more noises. Just because we're talking about maybe allowing chickens, that's, we had talked about before, not allowing roosters, because we don't want any more noise. So we're not going to amend the noise ordinance.
Those were the five ordinances that I was given in my four twenty-four packet.
Are they from the village of Ortonville?
Was the ordinance, was the health officer to correct conditions and condemn.
For any animals. For any concern of any animal.
Yes.
Right, that doesn't stipulate chickens.
But I'm just saying, I don't know how we're gonna monitor these chickens otherwise. But we don't really have the money to do that.
But again, do you monitor anything else in somebody's home? You don't. You do not monitor my cats, my dogs, my parakeets, my rabbits.
It's not in your home, it's in the yard, so.
These are outside animals. And they do attract-
The sanitary commissions on keeping pets.
Chickens are not in homes, they're in people's backyards.
Okay, on my property. On my property. You don't keep track of any animals unless there is a concern. If you have a valid concern, you would report that.
Well, what about the neighbors that do have concerns, though? If they live on a smaller piece of property, and a neighbor has three or four eighteen chickens, that's a concern for the fellow that may not want chickens. And if we redo an ordinance or consider doing that, say the person next to this guy in a smaller lot, he wants six or eight chickens. So now, within a half an acre, the guy's got twenty chickens, and he doesn't want them. So I'm more concerned with the people that maybe don't want the chickens than people that want chickens and are gonna consider them a pet. I don't think they're a pet. Pets to me are cats, dogs. If you've got a ferret, or three, or six, they're generally in a house. Chickens don't live in houses. They live outside. Doesn't make sense.
And that's, that's what I was just gonna say. So if I live with people with three dogs on each side of me, it's no different. You have three big dogs, 'cause you legally can have three dogs. So I'm in a tiny lot with six dogs next to me, that's a lot. So it just depends on everybody.
Dogs do not attract the amount and the type of predators the chickens do.
Well, chickens would have to be in a fence to begin with.
Dogs are supposed to be also, I mean, unless, or any pet.
There is no free roaming of any pet.
Yeah, there's no free roaming of any pet. So as far as attracting, yeah, or predators.
Vermin and predators.
Okay, and as I sent out the article to everybody, it is a total myth that they attract mice and things like that. You have a garden in your backyard that's going to attract mice, which will attract the coyote, which will eat the mouse. Everybody has mice in their backyard, everybody has mice in their garage. That's life. It is no different with a chicken.
I ran into, I don't know how many articles on the internet that discuss how chickens attract vermin and they attract predators.
If there's a mouse in a chicken coop, it's gone, 'cause the chicken will eat it. They don't attract it. They're enemies, they don't go in the same spaces.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, so.
These articles must be wrong.
No.
We gotta follow through with this one first.
Continue to discuss.
Any more discussion?
I don't think at this time we're singling out chickens. We do have an ordinance on chickens, all right? That's what we're here talking about, right? So we're not going out physically targeting a specific animal. We already have it on our, on our ordinances, and that's, I think that's what we're here to talk about. Should it be, or should it not be?
Correct.
Along with that, again, it says insects on there. It does not say you can't have exotic pets. I mean, you can continue to take the ordinance for what it is, or take it as a whole, should this be addressed. I mean, there's two different things there.
So this motion really says nothing about the numbers of chickens.
It has nothing to do with the number of, the keeping of, the, anything else. It's just purely, do we want to either stick with the current ordinance of zero chickens? Or do we want to allow for some amount of chickens?
John was talking about having to see an attorney and planning commission, and so what kinda cost is it to change the ordinance?
Well, you- But part of that ordinance, some of those ordinance, we have to update anyways.
We have to, right, either way, we're doing something. Basically, what my, when we sent that ordinance with the red, which some of you didn't get, I guess, that, how, it's really kinda, kinda simple, once we decide the guidelines we want. It's only a matter of switching a couple of words, making it inclusive. Like I said, the roaming, it's specific to dogs, that's just bad wording. It's, you know, no, you know, then, you know, they bring up the, okay, cats, and you go into the cat leash thing. I did that, that's not pretty. You know, nor putting the whole thing on a cat isn't pretty, I would imagine, but people get, you know, upset, and they have different ideas of what animals, you know, should be on a leash. And the leash is one thing. The chicken, in my estimation, if we allow chickens, it needs to be in a pen. That's just my opinion, and I don't have a vote here. Okay? But the free ranging around somebody else's yard and all of that, I don't think that that's proper. Whether it does something to somebody or whatever, I don't know. But I don't think that a chicken coop with a limit on chickens eliminates the noise, and you still have the other things. If it's a nuisance, it smells, or it looks terrible, or it's blight, you still have all of those to allow them. It just boils down to, in this village, whether we want to accept that or keep chicken as a firm animal and not let them in the village.
So it's minor, the true, Brandon Township allows chickens in the township as long as you own two and a half acres or more, and then they limit the number of chickens on that two and a half acre parcel?
Yes.
How many lots do we have in the village that are two and a half acres or more?
Not a whole lot.
So how many subdivisions in Brandon Township are there that have lots, two and a half acres or more? Subdivisions, residential subdivisions.
Yeah, there's probably only a handful of lots in the whole village. Yeah, two and a half.
I guess my point is, you know, they sought to regulate chickens to keep them out of residential areas, assigning a two and a half acre parcel.
And in the township also, just to piggyback on that, there are setbacks required.
Right.
And they're very stringent. So that's a part of two and a half acres with chickens, and it's a limit of six.
No roosters.
No roosters.
You can have a rooster.
You can, in Brandon Township?
Okay. They revised their laws when the Right to Farm Act changed, is when they revised their laws.
I thought they just recently revised, well, recently, like in the last year and a half?
It was two years ago when it changed, right?
Okay, all right.
And they just, once that changed, they, you know, that, like you said, that no longer umbrellaed, and that created an issue with the roosters.
For the rooster in the township, by the way, it was with the permission of a neighbor. If the neighbors were okay with it, they could get a rooster. Technically, you're right, but they had to have the compliance of a neighbor for roosters.
And that was part of the conversations we had in the last month or so about the whole chicken thing, was we had said there would be zero roosters because of the noise issue. So that if chickens were even going to be allowed, there'd still be zero roosters.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's not gonna change.
Right. Yeah, you got no different than your dog barking at 3:00 a.m.
Other comments, questions? Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Instruct the village manager to prepare ordinance revisions, yet to be determined, for the village ordinance ninety point three five through ninety point six two, in order to allow the keeping of chickens within the village with restrictions as approved by council in the future. Okay. So all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 So we have one, two. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Opposed.
I'm opposed.
Four nays and three ayes.
Okay. So that motion fails?
So I'd like to make a motion that the village manager immediately enforce the village ordinance ninety point three five to ninety point six two as written.
Support.
So we have a motion by Councilman Scornica.
I just changed it a little bit than what's written.
Yes. Supported by Councilman Batzoo.
Was it Batzoo or Ashwin?
It was Mark.
Okay.
Scornica and Batzoo. Okay. Discussion on this motion.
Is it the same?
Yeah. I see no need.
Okay.
It's not yet to be determined. It's pretty much cut and dry, right?
Cut and dry.
That is, you know. And I just changed it around, like I said, 'cause, I mean, that's something, our village manager is already the code enforcer, so it's not to instruct the village manager, it's just to immediately begin enforcing it.
And the items that we need to revise-
That the village manager immediately enforce.
The leash issue. The leash issue.
Yeah.
Well, that's still a remaining issue.
That's a whole separate, yeah.
Which one was, the leash one?
Yeah, it's a whole separate.
Yeah, exactly, it's a separate issue.
So that the village manager-
Immediately enforce. Village ordinance ninety three five.
Immediately begins?
No, immediately enforce.
Force, village ordinance ninety point three. Ninety point three five to ninety point six two, okay.
As written. As written.
I mean, what's it written? You just changed the motion. You're talking about the ordinance as written.
That's what, yeah, that's what she was just adding. Yeah.
Okay.
She was just confirming as written.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
You're supposed to say nay or aye.
Whatever.
Whatever.
It looks like it passes four yays and three nays. Okay. That's it.
Now, do we put in here, there's not a motion, but we, to revise that, to remove dogs and put animals? Is that something that?
No, you don't need to do that.
We don't need to do that? I guess I, I thought we needed to do this so that it just wasn't spelled out, that dogs for a leash.
He's gonna change it.
That's a whole separate issue.
You don't need to change, yeah.
That's a whole different ordinance. Yeah, we don't need to.
I know it's a whole different ordinance.
So the council trusts to your, Scornica's point, that that would just be worked on, John?
It's the running at large part.
The noise, or?
That the additional revisions on that ordinance as it relates to animals at large on a leash, et cetera. You talked about making some minor changes.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of ordinances that need the word dog stricken and changed to animal.
Right, just more, if this is the route we're going, which was what the vote indicated, then we need to do basically housekeeping on that ordinance, so it's easier to enforce and easier to, and then as another note, the village manager- the village manager is the health officer and he's the one that would do, do that with the help of the code enforcement and then other, the county health department and all of that. But he would be the one that, that, um, gets to enforce this.
So running at large as opposed to being attended or unattended?
As opposed to being-
On a leash?
Attended is not, is not leashing an animal, is not control.
Just because the animal's-
Lieutenant Glover stated too, about control on the leash.
Just because your animal's within sight doesn't mean you have control of the animal either.
Right.
Right.
So that's, that's what we'll do. You'll get a rough draft. So what happens, we do the, go through the draft process with both the planning commission, if, if it's necessary, and then you, then it goes, and once it's done, then it comes back to council and you have like a, you have a first reading. Then it's published, there's a public hearing, and then after that, there's a certain amount of days, um, probably the next meeting would be a second reading, the second public hearing, and then it goes into effect probably thirty days after that. Those are the changes.
Do you think you'd have time to have, uh, corrections to review for the planning commission, at the planning commission meeting in a week?
And try.
That'd be dandy.
That'd be dandy.
Be dandy.
Okay, moving on, old business, uh, item B, Michigan Recreation Passport Grant Program.
C, Ironbelt?
No.
C, we're doing B first.
We're doing B.
That's new business.
It's actually, technically all, we moved it around.
This also, um, council, um, last year approved, uh, us to go into a, a partnership with the Brandon Recreation Department in regards to our, our building, um, at, at the ball field at Sherman. Um, the, the grant, um, is for the, the update, a, a new roof and various things inside. Um, the kitchen facilities need to be repaired and, and the electrical needs to be upgraded. A whole litany of things with the building. I believe the, all of them are, are less than twenty thousand dollars. Um, and basically what Brandon Township needs is that they have written the grant and, and we can do that, as we, we own the building, but we can do that, but they need a, they need, uh, the state is requiring a forty year lease and that, um, uh, in order to get the funding. They're reaching the stage with the grant, as they're still in, in the running for that. The township wants to know, uh, 'cause there's been some discussion in that regarding the forty year lease, that some members of council do not like the idea of entering into a forty, forty year agreement. Brandon's problem is if they go through this procedure, continue, and they get the grant funding, funding, and then turn it down because we can't give them the lease, it's gonna look bad on them. So they just want us to make a decision on, on how they're gonna pursue this. If, if the council backs down and says that they aren't going to, uh, look at a forty year lease, then Brandon will pull themselves out of the running, um, for that grant.
So have you talked to Fred about this?
I've talked to both Fred and Kathy.
Did Fred and Kathy talk to you about when the DNR was here to review that concession stand that then the village manager, David Trent, talked to the DNR representative and told them of our dilemma about the lease? And that that DNR representative said that he thought there was plenty of time to change the name on that grant and put it in the Village of Ortonville's name instead of Brandon Township?
By the time that I got here and that was brought up, the, the window had closed.
So nobody-
So what would happen?
So Fred didn't bring it to anybody? He just sat, sat pat and said?
It, it appears so. I, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't here, Dan, and I don't wanna, you know, point fingers at, at anybody. But what would happen now, because the worst, you, you don't wanna go through that process and then get funding and then turn it down. It, it, it makes the entity look bad. So in the future, they may, and lots of times it's so close, it comes to, well, you know what, they turned it down last time, so let's give it to this other community, right? And it just does happen. But if, if, uh, the, the worst case scenario is if we say no, we're not gonna do the forty year lease, then we would have to just change everything around like we could have done maybe a month or two ago, um, and just the village apply and get the township to agree at the same terms, just flip flop it and the village do it.
Has anybody called that DNR representative to see if we still had time to do that?
I believe Kathy did. I did not.
So I'd like to make a motion to instruct the village manager to prepare a forty year lease with the township in accordance with state guidelines for the use of the building at Sherman Park.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Dialis, supported by Councilman Bryce, uh, as, uh, as read. Discussion?
So it's my understanding, or let me rephrase that. I guess it's my understanding that the, the, pretty much the only use that that building gets is for concessions for tournaments. Baseball, softball, T-ball, is that a correct statement?
And storage of-
Their leagues.
And storage of equipment.
And the league, yeah, leagues that are there at that. Um, and also Brandon Parks uses that facility as a, uh, storage, that's where they put their storage for equipment and things.
But, so, so, so again, so the only, pretty much the only use that that building has is for events that the township puts on. So it's my understanding that the village really doesn't even use that building. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
So, so then, I guess in my opinion, if the township is, is the only one that's using the building and the township needs the building, 'cause it, it, it funds the, the concessions for all these events and everything, and that's how they raise money, um, so they're the only ones using the building, that it needs to get fixed and that, that's kinda the way it worked out, but they're the only ones who use it anyways, uh, in my opinion, I guess I'm good with a forty year lease to the township.
So, so my point, it's not about how we use that building, and I think it's used for the right reasons. It's about the fact that somebody from Brandon Township, representing Brandon Township, applied for a grant to a piece of property they did not own. And then now we're backed in the corner to say, oh, they did something wrong and yet we're gonna protect them for, for the, the lease. I agree with Mr. Lyons saying that we could, uh, next year apply for the exact same grant, alright? And, and own that property in forty years from now, when we're not around, somebody's asking, who in the heck signed up for this forty year lease? The building has not fallen apart. I've walked it. Okay, yes, does it need repairs? Absolutely. Does it need to be addressed tomorrow or by October, whenever this due date is? No. Let's sign up and do this the right way. Let's apply for the grant.
But nobody did from the village. Guess what? Here's the township, the Parks and Rec Director that had the, the gumption to go and get this grant- to get the money to fix the building, and then now you're gonna say, no, you can't do it, I gotta do it?
Keith, do you, do you see it as a red flag for no one to come to the village and say, hey, we need some repairs? Can your DPW help us out?
They have.
Can we do something? When did that happen?
The village approved it, the village approved to pay a certain amount of, of it also. Yeah, we, we've done all of those stuff.
And our children will benefit. This is for our children. Why make them wait a year? This is not handicap accessible, nobody can use the bathrooms. Why make people wait?
My opinion is, is that, uh, with the items listed here, one through six, that this, this lease can be wordsmithed to a point where we would not relinquish, uh, control, that I think you're, you're worried of, Dan, uh, because of, uh, you know, if it's contingent upon successful award of the grant, contingent upon used for recreational purposes only, uh, contingent upon the fact that the village is an additional insured, there's hold harmless agreements, the township will maintain the building, not the village, and there's no liability for the village, there's no, really no reason why we shouldn't do this.
The, uh, the ball, the ball fields will continue to play, the kids will continue to have fun, the kids will know no different. This is politics right now. Fred Waybrent applied for a grant that he had no business applying for. We should have applied for it. He should, hey, why didn't he say, hey, Village of Ortonville, did you know there's a grant we can put in here? Work together on it and put it in our name? Why didn't he do that?
I don't know.
It's a forty year, it's a forty year lease.
We approved that when he did it. We, we approved him to even apply.
Yeah, we approved that a year ago.
The village is part of the recreation.
Well, we didn't approve a forty year lease.
Well, we don't have a recreation department either.
But we didn't approve a forty year lease. Okay, you're getting some free money, grant money, okay, let's go get it. And now there's a forty year lease attached to it.
Are there any other buildings or property in the village that has a, a lease twenty five, thirty years?
Not that, not that are involved by the, or controlled by the recreation department.
What was the deal with the tennis courts? Something with the tennis courts?
Tennis courts, uh, the school, the, the school donated, uh, for one dollar the land on which the tennis courts were built. And that came, that, we were allowed to get then a, a CDBG grant, and then that, uh, tennis courts were donated, were sold back to the school district. Back in nineteen seventy five.
That's another topic I, what do you wanna get into? Sorry.
It says-
Cooperative venture, cooperative ventures, I think are important. Uh, I think it shows the community that we are willing to work together. Uh, and there's no malice here. I, you know, I, I think-
I don't see it either.
I don't, you know, there's, there's good reason to work together in, uh, in the spirit of, of cooperation.
And another example is the school district giving the, selling the library, the land that the library's on.
Yeah, for one dollar, yeah.
For a dollar. Absolutely awesome.
With this, um, the paper that I just now got in my hand?
Yeah, I, I'm forwarding it to you because I know you're, you're pitch hitting, you're coming in the middle of, of an inning, and I know you haven't seen that letter.
The lease period is minimum of twenty five years. Um, so, you know, I, and I, I don't mind, um, you know, going back to them and, and asking them about that.
Why wouldn't you mind asking if they could change the name on the, the grant?
I, I can, but I know that this is like the first of September and I don't, I think we passed it, but, um, and I, that discussion with, with the supervisor happened almost immediately when I got here. This is an April letter saying that we could try for twenty five years, which may be more acceptable. I know that it's been a ball field for about forty years, if not over forty years now.
So if that's back in April, it said twenty five, then I guess why didn't, at, at minimum, why didn't it get submitted or reviewed for twenty five? And then you mean I'm answering-
Well, submitted with no lease, and now the state has come back and said they want a forty year lease.
From the beginning, they've said that. This has been the discussion from the beginning of this grant. The state requires forty years. It's not what we decided, it's what the state decided.
But they're saying in that letter that they would accept twenty five.
So my question is, then why didn't we at least do a twenty, at least even see the-
There's been no draft lease.
Okay.
Um, done. Again, the draft lease gets-
Is waiting on us.
The township attorney and the village attorney and, um,
forty years for enclosed structures.
Is that what it says?
Yep.
And the, the lease would-
For enclosed. For enclosed.
The lease would put them, they would have, 'cause they have exclusive use. We, we don't, we don't do anything there other than if the gutters fall down, we put them back up, and, you know, the sinks and, and things like that. The building is in disrepair. Um, and that, that's all we do. A new lease, if they're gonna be the sole occupants, then they're gonna be the sole maintenance people and, and everything, you know, on that. But, um, the, the, unfortunately, um, Councilman Etchman is right that it's, it's putting us into a spot where, uh, uh, in the corner, um, where, and, and I, I understand Brandon's, uh, their dilemma too, 'cause if they, if they go ahead and they get funded and they don't take the money, it's just bad business. You just don't do that. You get the money, you take it and run.
I guess they weren't so worried about that for not asking to change the name on it after the DNR visit. They weren't worried about that risk.
Well, it was a moot, a year ago it was moot point because they didn't get the grant. I mean, it was something that didn't happen. So it could, it could not happen again this year. It can be totally denied. That, there's no guarantees.
That's completely possible.
But right now it's wait, it's in, I'll say for a little bit, in a pending state, waiting for this lease.
This is just Brandon not wanting to be seen bad by the DNR. That's, that's basically all it is. And I, I felt it needed to come to you before we, you know, we said no, or we, you know, whatever we did. Um, it, it's advantageous for them if we're, that we're not gonna do it if we drop out now and say, no, we're not gonna do it.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, in support. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, uh, so we, we don't have any dollar figures on this lease? We don't, um,
We don't have a draft.
You have to be determined.
You have to be determined.
We don't have a draft.
A dollar figure for what?
To either charge or get, I mean, are we gonna charge them or?
We don't now.
I don't think that we would.
I, I know, I bet, I mean, you know.
I think the lease should stipulate that if they vendor that out and they make money, that we should get a cut of it.
I agree.
I think that's just good business too.
But those, those proceeds are paying for the-
Equipment for the kids.
Yeah, the, the whole recreation program.
Do we know that? I mean, are we assuming that or do we know that? I mean, I mean, I'm just asking. Do we, do we know that the proceeds from that are, are buying equipment? I mean, I, I don't know if we know that.
The woman who runs the concession stand is running it independently, not getting paid, buying her own items, bringing it in and selling it, so the kids have better equipment. It's not even done by the recreation department. It's a person with a heart who loves her children in the neighborhood. It, this is not against them. This is how can we benefit our children?
How come Fred's not here today?
This is clarification.
No, I'm saying, but in general, I mean, this is about the kids, not us and Fred.
He did not tell them. Him and Kathy both knew that I was gonna bring this up for discussion.
Well, you know, I think we need to check out the letter from the DNR. And it said twenty five, they would accept a twenty five year lease. So, I don't think it's written in stone that it has to be a forty year lease if we've got a letter from the DNR dated, I think it was April twenty fourth of this year, saying that they would accept a twenty five year lease.
I don't know if it's the term. Is it the term, Dan, or is it just in general?
I mean, I just ran across that.
Yeah, lease or no lease, and I don't, I don't think it's twenty five, because I think the way trustee Dialis read that, it was an enclosed.
But to trustee, uh, Bryce's point, which it does say further down here, this lease however can somewhat, can be somewhat less than forty years. We will accept a lease period of a minimum of twenty five years. At this point, it can be a draft lease with a letter of intention from the village that they are in support of the application and will enter into a lease if the grant is awarded. The actual signed lease then would not be required until the project agreement was signed and submitted. If this grant is awarded, it would be approximately a year from now.
That's what the township wants, that intent.
So.
What the intent means, yeah, we either approve a forty year lease or not.
A lease of, at minimum of twenty five years, uh,
You could modify, you could modify your motion to state up to twenty five years, up to, up to forty years.
Would that be more palatable, trustee Etchman?
No, I'm, I'm not in favor of any lease. I'm in favor of doing it the right way. Ortonville should have applied for the grant. Fred should not have covertly done that, and I believe he could have brought that up to the DNR to get our name changed based off of what village manager Trent told me. I think he could have done that, and he chose not to.
Is there still time to pu, to resubmit the, or submit the grant or resubmit it, whatever happens to be, we need to do, but, um, with just the Ortonville, you know, with just Ortonville on it?
Well, that, we-
Not this year.
No, not this year.
You said the deadline is what? Is it September twenty, uh, September thirtieth?
That's for the township has to withdraw before October first.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, I'm gonna call for the vote now. I don't think a roll call is necessary. All those in favor of the motion is read to enter into a forty year lease with the township in accordance with state regulations for the use of the building at Sherman Park. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 And who are the, who are the nays?
Same.
Why enter into a forty year lease if you don't have to?
Yeah, motion. Okay, now we're on the Iron Bell Trails discussion.
So I've asked to put this back on the agenda. Uh, I did bring this up in our last meeting in July. That right now, um, there are two routes that are of an option to bring the trail, um, through our community. Um, I understand the DDA's concern over, um, trying to spark businesses. I also understand the concerns over, our residents' concerns over privacy, liability concerns, safety concerns of a route that goes through woods, through people's backyards. And for that reason, I'd like to bring up tonight the proposal of making the Seymour Lake Road option to M fifteen the option for the village of Ortonville. What that does for us is number one, convenience of our law enforcement to be able to physically, visually see that route from the highway. It's going to be well lit. It'll be safe route, uh, through, um, our section of the village. It will have multiple streets coming from that, um, trail route that allows for those trail users to come into our village at any time. But not yet direct them straight down someone's backyard or straight down someone's front yard or into a village where we don't have the space to widen our roads, to widen our sidewalks, to basically, um, have a parade of bikes coming through town. The Seymour Lake Road, um, to M fifteen route will give our residents the option or the, the path user, trail route users options to come in and see what this village is all about. I think it's the DDA's job to, okay, what's in the village? How can we make it enticing for those riders to come into our town and visit our town? That's what the DDA needs to do. Just bringing a trail right straight down through town that, that disrupts the, our residents' privacies and whatnot does not create a village. All right? It will not spark, you know, additional businesses there, here. All right? So, uh, it is for that reason, I'd like to make a motion tonight. I'd like to make a motion to designate the Seymour Lake Road to M fifteen route as the, um, as the approved route, uh, Iron Bell Trail Route, uh, for the village of Ortonville.
I'll support.
Motion by Councilman Eshman, supported by Councilman Batsu to, uh, approve a Iron Bell Trail connection down Seymour Lake Road, down M fifteen in its entirety through the village. Correct?
Yes, that would, that would, uh, connect up at somewhere just south of Granger Road and then run just north of, I believe, um, oh, was it the, uh, the old pet store? What, what road is that?
Mills, uh.
Mills.
Myron. Myron, just north, just north of Myron, I believe.
I think that the, uh, you know, this motion should be contingent upon the, um, Iron Bell Trail being approved in Brandon Township as well. Uh, we're all having a straw vote, email vote, whatever. And it's may pass and it may not pass. We don't know, but it should be contingent upon the trail being approved in Brandon Township.
I, I do know that, uh, there are many Brandon Township residents that have equal, even though, even more greater concerns over, uh, routing the, um, trail through the backside and/or the front side, but mostly the backside of people's properties where they now have electric fences for their animals and their horses, et cetera. So they're worried about liability and then what they have to do with their property to be able to protect themselves from liability given a trail run right to the backside of their property. So I, um, you know, I, I get the fact, I think there's, you know, the alternate route is if, you know, if Brandon doesn't approve a route that their residents, um, the majority of their residents, um, are, are seeking, then the alternate is, is to go around Brandon Township. It will, there won't be a trail in, in the township. They'll go around us.
It, we don't know if, if it's going to be approved or not in, in Brandon Township. I mean, I like this trail route, Seymour Lake Road and up at fifteen. I really like that for Ortonville.
Can I, can I ask, um, the approved route right now north of us, um, what, what is that approved route? Does anybody know?
That's what I was going to ask. I don't know.
The connector, the connector of the north, the end of the town's route?
No idea.
I, it's my understanding that was coming up to M fifteen.
That's what I thought. Plus, M fifteen, um, is designated as the heritage route. It's a, it, it's already known for, it has a, a name to it. And I think if a trail were to go through, I think that would make sense to use something that's already designated as the heritage route, which is M fifteen.
What's the other option that Brandon is considering right now? What are, what are their, what are their trail options that are still on the table? I don't even know them anymore.
Baldwin down Hummer Lake all the way through the village, is that one of them?
Mm-hmm.
It's all of them, is it? Are they reviewing all of them again?
I thought they eliminated, I thought they eliminated a couple.
Cut one off the table, I think it was C if I remember.
Yeah, they eliminated one and stopped the other, but I know there was other concerns on the other ones as well.
There are a whole lot of issues that, uh. I find, I find the issue of the township trustee who lives on the ITC to be totally off base and, uh, totally unfounded. And he should not even be on that subcommittee. He should not even be any part of those discussions.
But yet, we're not, we weren't even invited. So here's another, here's another situation where Brandon Township's taking the lead and dictating what the village is going to do.
Why don't we have somebody?
How come we weren't invited to that?
That's a good question.
Why don't, yeah.
My point is, we take the lead. This is the village owning the village saying what's right for the residents. That's what, that's how I look at it.
The lead if not be a part of the discussion as a committee member.
Yeah.
I agree with, with trustee Eshman. We should take the lead in, in deciding, you know, our own fate when it comes to the trails.
So if, if we, if we pass this motion and, and they decide that the township votes to come up Hummer Lake Road, we're just going to say, no, you can't come to the village?
At this point, yeah.
They're not, they're not voting.
It might help them decide maybe the, the Seymour Lake Road route, which is the majority of the residents are, are leaning towards now.
Or, or what other, or any other route? Any other route through the village or, or, yeah, any other route through the village, we would just say no to.
At, at this point, it would be up to consideration. But the right, the route I'm suggesting right now is to be that route. And if they come with an alternative route, other than to come right down Mill Street or right up Granger Road, um, then I think it needs to be reconsidered by the council. But at this point, I believe we need to take the lead on what we believe is right for the safety of our residents, the privacy of our residents, the liability of our residents. I think we need to take that lead.
Is it too late for, for the village to be included in the township stuff now?
Anybody is welcome at these meetings for the past four years at any time.
One of the things you have to remember is, is that.
As a village council member, not as a public.
We are, we are residents of Brandon Township.
Right.
And as such, you know, we forget that that's, that's the case.
Oh, I didn't forget. I'm just saying, um, somebody from the council, from us, not there to attend on a private, public relationship, but as a village council relationship. That's what I'm suggesting, why we weren't part of that.
Well, I, I have that same question. Uh, my only, my only, my only reservation about, um, Mr. Eshman's, um, motion is that MDOT has said two years ago that they will not be widening M fifteen other than at intersections. Uh, now, what that means is that the A and W and Willow Point are directly in the way and there's no way that a path would go through the A and W and Willow Point without tearing down the buildings. So you would have to go through the village. You would have to.
Not necessarily.
Well, how would you go if you're not going to go down, you got?
How many, how many roads does the trail cross from Detroit to Brandon Township?
No, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about from Granger Road to, uh. You can't go, you can't go down M fifteen.
How many, how many roads, does it have to be on that side of the road?
Well, there's only, there's, you got a bridge that's this wide, just like the Oakwood Road issue.
Well, we're, we're putting a sidewalk up Oakwood.
Well, there's not enough room. Right now, MDOT has got a, you know, they got to tear down the A and W, they got to tear down, uh, Willow Point buildings. That's why Willow Point Building cannot be sold right now.
Oh.
There's issues there. It's so, it's so close to the, the existing road that there's no room. So that's why when I talked with you, uh, several weeks ago, we talked about perhaps running it down South Street and then coming back out with the library and then back onto M fifteen as a, as an alternative. I think, I, I think, yeah, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of merit to, uh, your motion and, uh, visibility, security and all those issues that I think are, are good ones. That is the only kicker that I have with that, uh, particular location, so.
Well, let's, let's, let's figure out what the, the best way it is to come down up fifteen from Seymour Lake Road then is. That's, I'm not going to change my motion because I, I feel, I feel it can be done.
Just as a point of fact, if you notice, the concrete has been poured at the Genesis Credit Union and it includes the path. It was just, just poured a couple of days ago.
I noticed that.
Yeah.
Well, for the Willow Point and, and even A and W, that, that's going to be an issue no matter what.
Exactly. Exactly.
So the sidewalk in front of the bank is like eight feet wide or something?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It doesn't work. You can't, they have to change that.
So we need just.
That will not work for this path.
I mean, it's, it's, it's in, it's in conjunction with the path that's already existing to the high school. From the A and W to the high school. That's going to be piecemealed. And as those parcels are developed, it'll be required that, that path continue on down.
As a sidewalk.
Well, whatever you want to call it.
It's just a simple line.
Um, that was one of my concerns, I know I mentioned last month about having Kristen Woodpine here. Um, the person who represents the county and the engineers and everybody who knows about this, um, not us. And I really would like to have input from people who do this as a living all the time and know the regulations before we make a decision that, on something that I do not feel we're educated on. I think we can suggest anything. But to make a decision on something, I don't feel comfortable with that without contacting people who know what they're doing.
We came up with the routes based off a straw poll that didn't even come from the people from the township or the village. It was sent by email. So it doesn't take education to figure out, okay, you pick a road and then we figure out how we're going to do it.
It was eight years in the making by engineers. This was not something that the township picked on their own. If, if people would attend meetings, they'll get this information and they'll be educated on what decisions. I just don't like making decisions for other people based without the information in front of us. We don't have anything besides this would be a great idea. I like the idea, but that's different than making a decision without the facts in front of us. We wouldn't put a road in without the engineers deciding first.
I'm making a decision based off of our residents' feedback and I'm here representing the residents and that's therefore, that's where I make my motion to support our residents.
Other discussion?
Is there a reason why all of the email responses we've received from residents have not been read? We've received multiple in support of the.
We have, we have.
The village council has received multiple trail emails over months and none of them have been read in our meetings.
Well, I, I, I read them. I don't bring them here to read because it's like they're sent to my email.
But when we receive a correspondence, is it not supposed to be read in public? I mean, none of them have been read. But people are telling us what they feel.
Well, we need to read.
No, that's not my job to do that. I mean, that's, that has to come from the manager or the president, not me.
Oh, I guess you were, I thought you were asking us.
No, I'm just saying in general, like, is there a reason why they haven't?
You're talking about thousands of emails that, that the city or the village gets. I don't, I don't understand what that is. What are you, you don't publish emails?
People that, if they send us a correspondence to us for or against something.
You get it, it don't get read in public.
Well, we have for many other items all the time. That's what I'm wondering, why this, this hasn't been? When we receive a correspondence to us, that is for the public.
I've, I've received two.
That it comes to all of us.
I've received two that were in support of trails in general.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, we have to read the pro and the con emails when it comes to trails or anything else, you know, you.
But that's what I'm saying, we are now.
We have to read both sides.
Most people that are in favor of a trail doesn't, they don't care where it's at in relationship, but it's more that they have a trail. Um, and in this case, um, we're offering up, uh, something that will suit our village residents in my mind.
To trustee Bryce's point, uh, Kristen, Kirsten, was she, um, was an invitation extended to her to attend or she wasn't able to or?
No.
She was, she wasn't able to, she wasn't extended?
We probably have to put it on the agenda, so.
Oh, that's right. It wasn't on the agenda.
It wasn't even on the agenda.
Right. It wasn't on the agenda.
And she's not, right, 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 sorry.
So, you know, this can be voted for or against, it can be tabled?
I think we have a motion out there right now.
We do have a motion, yes. Oh, yeah.
I'd make a suggestion to table it till we get further information upon the, for the motion.
That doesn't take away the motion.
The township, um, their deadline is September, so that would then be before our next meeting.
Before our next meeting.
Right. So then by our next meeting, we would then have the information from where they stand, we would then have the invite out. We could then accumulate all of the emails that have been given to us for support or against for our members and we can then have that information provided to make a good judgment.
Yeah, I guess I'd, I mean, I, when they, when the emails are sent to me, I read them. I, I don't, I don't know so much as like if they get right into meeting. I mean, I don't know if that's, we haven't historically done.
Emails are, are sent to us on chicken.
All the ones were for the sewers, all the ones were with the village.
Chickens.
They weren't read by the village manager. I mean, I, I read them, it's like it's for, or by the village president. To read all those? I mean, I read them and take into consideration what they're asking of me, but.
But when it's given to the council itself, isn't it given, it is meant to be publicly, correct? It's not given to you, it's given to the council?
As a council member, right.
Yeah, we share that information, but we don't.
That's how we make decisions.
We don't publicize it.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
I think I supported it.
You did? Comment? Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the motion is read, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Nay?
I'd like more information.
So that's a nay then? You got to vote.
So are we, we approve, but?
What's your vote?
We're approving the routes that are here then?
Yeah.
What?
It's a nay. If we, if I, if I'd like more information, it's a nay.
Okay. So we have four nays, three a's. So it sounds like more information is in order.
What timeframe do we have for getting more information?
By the next meeting.
By the next meeting, okay.
So if the township comes to us next meeting and says they've, they picked a route that's going to come right up Granger Road, are we going to all approve that? Because they made it, that's their route?
We can address that at that time.
They're not, they're not choosing a route.
No, no difference, we're going to address that at any time they come up with their suggestion.
Kind of like, kind of like a grant, huh?
They're, they're not choosing a route right now. They are only choosing, do you want trails or don't, do you not want trails? They aren't choosing routes right now.
Yeah. And I'm going to be, I'm going to be meeting with, uh, I'm going to be meeting with our supervisor tomorrow and I'm going to be calling a meeting and we're going to be discussing the lack of representation.
Right, I would like.
On behalf.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Which I'm.
Village council needs representation there and we need more information.
Will you invite Kristen to our meeting, please?
I'd like to sit on that, um, as representative of Ortonville to sit on the, uh, the, whatever committee they've got going for Iron Bell Trail.
You along with Mr.
McAvon?
Anti-ITC guy?
I'm not, I'm not against trails. I didn't say that.
I know you're not.
I did not say that.
Let's not talk that way about trustees.
I didn't mention her name.
New business.
New business. Like, uh, we have a homecoming parade application permit for Brandon High School Homecoming Parade, which is going to be held on September twenty. Parade, which is going to be held on September 22 at 5:30 PM. Entertaining motion?
May I make a motion to approve the 2017 Homecoming Parade as submitted? Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Bryce, supported by Councilman Skarnica. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One comment that has, it's fine, but we keep saying we need to revise this, this doesn't even say what it's for.
Yes, it does.
It doesn't even say that it's a homecoming parade. Nope.
Oh, I thought I...
Because we don't give them a place to do that, so we have to revise this.
Oh, I was looking at their, I think they need some spelling, but um...
Because, you know, Fred kind of said, oh, can we look it over? Because it doesn't fit like Septemberfest, Anna Fuss, it, it doesn't catch everything.
I guess I saw September and I thought it was Septemberfest.
That would be great, Liz, to have a draft of something.
I was just...
I mean, we know what it is, but it just doesn't tell us what it is. There's no line.
Says a name of the group or organization, desire...
Number eight, specify exactly what use or uses you are requesting that requires a permit.
See attached paper.
Yeah, but attached paper is just a, a, a map, but that's, that's right where they should say, we plan on having a parade.
We shouldn't accept it unless it's completely filled out right. When we review it, they press, yeah.
The problem is, it always comes with a second.
But it doesn't say what is your event. We just need your event on there.
Sure.
A line that says events.
Yep, exactly. That would clarify.
The exact name of your...
Moving along.
Oh, well, this would be too.
Yeah, I guess it would be.
Okay.
September, Orion, Ortonville.
It's like under new business, we...
Student Council.
2018 Smart Municipal Credit and Community Grant, or Credit, I should say.
This is an annual tran, transfer of funds from the Smart Transportation to, the village initially gets that, and then we have in the past transferred that for use to Brandon Township Rec, and now they've added Recreation and Senior Department.
Like we did that.
For transportation purposes, we do it every year.
Yeah, last year we did that till we split it.
Yep.
Yeah, how much, how much is that?
$1,400.
$1,406.
$1,409, six. $1,406.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the 2017-18 Smart Credit of $1,406 to Brandon Township, with 50% allocated to the Recreation Department and 50% to the Senior Transportation.
Support.
Keith and Dan.
So we have Councilman Dialis and Councilman Eschman moving and supporting, and so we're transferring money, so we'll do a roll call, please. Liz?
Okay. Skarnica?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Dialis?
Yes.
Motion is carried, thank you. Item 13 in our new business, public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone?
I think we've been to these meetings before. So you have to excuse me if I don't quite know how to like work this thing. My husband and I live in the village, and we have six children. We bought our house here in 2008. I love it because it reminds me of Berkeley without all the crap, if you'll pardon my French, and he loves it because I couldn't convince him to move down to Berkeley. And I'm just wondering what, as village residents, we can do when you guys make a change or decide something that maybe the majority of us don't agree with?
You can send us an email.
Okay.
You can voice your, you can voice your opinion?
Okay, well, we haven't came to these meetings because I've, I have felt that, you know, we live in a village, we've been here, like I said, since 2008. Things have gone very well. I trust that the people who are in charge of where we live are doing a good job. I think this might be a little related to the previous discussion, and I know it might be too late at this point. When we moved here, I actually came here and I talked to the people in this office about whether or not it was okay that we have chickens, before we bought any, because we didn't want to break any rules, being that we live right in the village, and I was told then that it was okay, as long as my neighbors didn't complain. So we bought chickens, and we have had chickens since we've lived here. Both neighbors on both sides have never had a problem with it, and I very much respect all of the points that you brought up, but I will disagree with you. I would like you to tell my eight-year-old daughter that the chickens we have aren't her pets, that she plays with every day, that we actually put diapers on and light in our house, because we're weird chicken people. So I guess I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could do something to allow that to be something we can continue to do. I would urge you guys to really consider that. You know, I know it can be a nuisance, and I know it can be annoying. We did admittedly just get a rooster for show, but he has a no crow collar, and sadly, he sounds like a chicken, which is pretty demasculating, because, you know, they're big bad guys. And that is something that when we, we got him, you know, we figured if it wasn't something that was okay, we're more than okay with, you know, giving him to somebody that would be able to show him, you know, and not hurt him or put him to death. But I think with this whole chicken thing, it's like, I don't know, it's, I felt, I trusted you guys to make a decision that was going to be in favor of what me and neighbors and everybody on my street, even the people that don't have chickens, feel, and you totally went against how we feel, and I don't think that's fair. I think if you're going to make a decision on something, you should talk to the people who it's affecting, you know, and maybe let us decide what we want to do in that situation or in that case. You know, because if my neighbors came to me and told me they didn't want me to have chickens, I'd get rid of them out of respect. But you wouldn't know by driving by my house that I have chickens, but a couple doors down from me, the front porch, it's always full of garbage and boxes and trash, you would notice that, but that's never been taken care of, and I don't think that's fair. If you want to bring up blight, there's plenty of blight in Ortonville, and my kids' bikes and crazy toys and broken pieces of chalk are probably part of that at times, but I want my kids to live here and grow up here and stay here. I don't want them to leave Ortonville. I love Ortonville. I love the family values, the way that the village runs, the way that the environment is. I don't want them to feel like it's repressive and the people that are supposed to be their leaders just do whatever they want because they might not or like something, you know, just consider that for the future, and if there is a way for us to keep our chickens, I will be looking into that, so you'll probably see more of me.
I have a question.
Yes.
You indicated when you first started addressing the council...
Yes.
That you went, you came into this office?
Oh, yes, I came here.
Came here to this building?
I came into this building to...
Okay, now, let me just, let me just indicate right there, I think that was an error...
Oh, no, I know what you're getting at. The township, thought I lived in the township?
Yes.
No, I know that too. That's why I also called and emailed Village Council, Village people.
The village would never have said that.
Well, they did, but they did. So unfortunately, unfortunately, they did. They told us, they're like, well, we don't have an ordinance on the books, but as long as, as long as your neighbors don't complain, it's okay, so...
But the clerk or manager?
That was the manager that I called and spoke to, and I also have email, I mean...
2008?
This, we're, it was 2009 we bought the chickens.
2001?
I mean, 2009. I've had the same email addressed since then. I can go back and see if I can find the email history to show you. I mean, I, we wouldn't have spent hundreds of dollars on building a coop. I mean, we dug down, like, what was it, two, three feet to put wires so that they, you know what I mean? Like, we went through extensive amount of, like, financial investment in these chickens. We would not have done that if we were not told that it would be okay. It's not like we just have a box where we threw some chickens. Like, we actually added on to our shed, we, I sacrificed, we were going to turn part of our shed into a studio, I sacrificed that so that can be an indoor coop for the chickens. Like, this wasn't like, oh, hey, we'll do whatever we want because we're people and we can do that. It was, we were very sure to ask all the people that we needed to get permission from and go all about all the, the right channels before we made the decision that we made. I wouldn't have just gone off like, oh, well, the, the township said this, and so we've made some, you know, fly-off-the-handle decision.
The reason why I brought it up is that I was approached by a lady, not about this particular topic, but about the misunderstanding of the different organizations.
Oh, yeah.
She, she wrote me, she wrote, sent me an email, reeled me up one side and down the other because of the way I conducted a meeting, and I said, and she said there was several, several people there, and I said, well, there weren't that many people there. Come to find out, she was talking about a township meeting and she wrote it to me.
That is confusing, I will say. I mean, even as village member, as village residents, there's many times when I go online to find something about the village and it's directing me to Brandon, and, you know, as far, like, with this whole, we have, we live right on Cedar, so, you know, the property that we own is leased to Br, like, there's a lot of that, that's like, what is the point? Why can't there just be like one group of people that is in charge of everything? That would make more sense. But I don't know, I'm not behind the politics, and hopefully as we come, we'll learn.
Okay, I was just, I just wanted to be clear about...
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, we've like, when we moved here, like I said, we made sure to cross our i's and dot our t's.
Actually...
Cross our t's and dot our i's.
Thank, thank you for your input. I appreciate that.
So, to address your original question, though, what, what can citizens do? Number one would be coming to meetings and speaking like you have, but I guess would it not, another thing to do is, is if you felt strongly about a topic, to somehow make a petition for whatever the cause is, so that, like, for instance, the sewer topic, just to throw something out there, and if somebody was strongly against sewers, they could somehow get a petition and go around town and get signatures of people against that.
Absolutely. They did.
They did.
Then you can have it put on the ballot.
Yeah, how many signatures?
It's 10 percent.
It needed enough to go to a vote.
I think it's 10, 10 percent.
10 percent, 60.